Homework.
I thought maybe I got left out.
No, this is... Brad, what do we talk to be talking about?
You had my Chris, you said. He said, "Do you think that the clerk's office raised mine?" The fire is not on me, I said. No, I said, "Did you tell him?" He said, "No, good." I know, he said, "I got a phone call." Somebody called me, and I was like, "Their taxes went up." I told him it was because of the fire.
It's all closed call.
Well, Banana, wait, no.
Yeah, I was gonna say, "No, I know."
I said, "I said, I know." So, I'll take it for it. I love you. Here's those future guys, not me.
I've got nine o'clock. What would mean, what would mean to like? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. January 4th, the bridge gets here. We do have some table notices from sheriff. And we have official minutes for January 21st and January 27th. Can you even decide a second review, say?
That's for you.
Good morning. How do you think? I'm doing fine for you guys. Listen, were you at the home of fame? I saw you on the corner of my eye.
I saw you taking all your pictures.
I know, because why they put me in the back?
I know.
I could be up long ago. One time they took my food. I was like, "Oh."
I wondered if you were busy speaking when they started.
Oh, wow. There's some brandy beans.
You need to tell them next time you need to be towards...
I know. Well, when David and Connie got there, we're, I went there last time and they were right up front. So, I just turned around and took photos.
Yeah, it was very nice.
Tell them you went up on the desk. That's where you want to be.
I mean, it was a nice, nice event.
It was nice. Nice turnout, good food.
Yeah.
That's on the table. I also have a letter here from Royal Valley High School post-prom, after-prom event, and they're asking for their cash donation like we normally do. It's normally a thousand dollars. So, I would entertain a motion to give Royal Valley High School after-prom event a thousand dollars for their post-prom. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Donation to Royal Valley. Passed. We have a purchase order here from the clerk's office. She wants to spend some money. For IPDS cards for the printers for the 400 system. Five hundred and fifty dollars each. Logan is actually giving them to us at cost. And according to, according to Logan, Logan business machines, according to Logan's business machines, the old cards are no longer available, so we have to upgrade. So, that's why they went up price. So, we need a motion for this. So, I would entertain a motion to purchase free IPDS cards for the printers in the clerk's office for five hundred and fifty dollars each. Sixteen hundred and fifty dollars total.
Seven.
Second. Been properly moved and seconded to purchase the IPDS cards to the clerk's office. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Now, that's, that's the last money for the year.
I don't spend much, so I don't plan on spending anything else.
I think she's touched her.
All right. And from Jackson County Fair Association, they have sent us their financial statement for the last year. Is, so are they asking for their normal appropriation? Or is that just a given or what? How's, how is that? They didn't ask for anything, so...
We just normally have a given appropriation to have sent them.
Okay, so we don't have to do anything. This is just...
Typically, they just send their budget or their financials in so we can look over and see how they send it.
The historic side, you just get...
Yeah. And all those appropriations that are on that list, unless we choose to take them off there at some point, they're just reoccurring.
And speaking of appropriations, I was at the Northeast Kansas Farmhouse two weeks ago. And we do ten thousand dollars, I believe, for that. Each county does. They're looking at raising, asking for raising their appropriations. They have not, they said that is a same ask that they have had since since they started Northeast Kansas Farmhouse. And so, just to put that on your radar, I said, I said, probably won't happen this year, but you need to, you know, make us aware of it so we can, you know, look at budgeting it in.
Did they have a guess that they were not doing that?
No.
They don't. I would just tell Martha to come in when we start budgets in April, that she can come in and invite you with her ask.
Yeah, so what the ask is. So, but like I said, they, they haven't had, they, they haven't increased since they started it. And for ten thousand dollars for us to try to do what they do, I don't think we can do it. It's, it's probably going to be something we're gonna have to look at hard. But it, it was, it was mentioned in the board meeting that it would have to be a consensus of all the counties because one county's on a favor of the other. So, we have to consensus all of them to do it, so. That's just putting down on your radar.
That is a check that we had work.
For what? A refund for the bank account?
Yeah.
Oh, all right, yeah. So, what do we have to do for that? No more than one thing to sign.
I think I can select without a problem.
One too much. Step two.
Oh, go ahead.
And we do have some tax documents designed to...
I was asked by my fellow coworkers if we could, if we could waive the fee for the meeting room on February 22nd so we can host the legislative forum with our local lawmakers. That's all I know about. David and Brian kind of organizing it.
I believe we did that last year.
I think he did that last year. It's just in the morning. I think last year we did, everyone there, we did it from 9:30 to 11:00. I didn't, I wasn't there last year for it, but...
I think that's right.
Brian and David did it last. Sometimes I go just kind of in. So, I think Brian talked to Pat about it last week. And I don't think there was a scheduling conflict or anything like that. Is that right, Christie? Okay. So, that's, yeah. If you could be willing to do that, I mean, it's for, it's open for the public. I think who, but I don't know if it's all RSVP yet, but, you know, Craig Powell, Zerishan Volkan, Francis, they've all been invited and...
And I, I have no problem with that. Like I said, we did that last year, so I...
I have a motion to waive the fee for the legislative forum held in the courthouse.
Very second.
Second.
2025, you're...
And we're properly moving seconded to waive the fee for the legislative forum held in the courthouse in the Royal Hall. Any further discussion?
All right, all right. All right, thank you.
Absolutely, there. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you. Christie, do they have to fill out a paperwork or who likes that?
I think Brian took...
Do you pay it? Okay. I just mentioned there, so I would...
If not, I'd be okay.
Morning.
Morning.
Matt, how are you?
Good, you?
I saw you slipping back here.
Morning, Matt.
Morning.
Hold on just a second. Trying to catch up here.
And I can pick it up, the yard, that's whatever. Off, run out. Day, write a check or two or whatever. All installed. Hey, guy come in with load of hay and right offline, everyone. We're gonna replace it with a bigger one. But you can go down, take a look at it and take on it. You can expect whatever you process or...
All right, morning, gentlemen. How we doing?
Good.
Here's our number four, noon, or just like the cycle. Tons that we shipped out from last year.
I'll take one.
Take one.
I always think it's interesting. I try to.
Basically, it's the amount of tonnage that we're keeping out of landfills. Looks like things down a little bit from 23?
Just a little bit, yeah.
Some are down, some are outside.
But it looks like the pile is getting smaller out there with the new concrete, the quarry dumpster is. There used to be quite a bit of recycling in the pipe. You're talking about how, how landfill some of this is done landfill? Or all of it is?
No, this is down here.
Oh, oh, okay. So, I was talking about there...
Yeah, this is what we recycle and actually turn and give money back.
And then down there, this stuff that's recycled down there that goes to scrap iron?
Well, the scrap iron, yes, the pile is getting smaller.
It is getting smaller. That looks like that process is working.
Yes. What, what is plastic number two heavy? That is like your laundry detergent bottles, stuff like that. Oh, okay, so those aren't, those aren't part of the, those aren't part of the recycling? Yes, it is. Don't say the last time you had a market for it. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, no. The natural. The natural, like laundry detergent, all those. All right, well, I'll keep throwing those in there. Yeah. Now, there is, there is a certain one. I think it's got a five on the model. Yeah. That we don't take. And is that, is that considered a five? I mean, is that considered a heavy? It's one that we don't. The can you recycle is just we don't have to... We don't do it? Yeah, we don't have to bring it. Okay. All right, perfect. Have they got any questions about the recycling number?
Yep.
You want to take your report, Mary, real quick? Yeah, we can do that real quick. I would, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session for five minutes for non-elected personnel and employee performance.
Five, five minutes is long enough?
Starting at 9:15.
You want, you want to go 10? Let's go 10.
Okay.
Just to make sure he's using it. Commissioners, Clark, Todd, Scott, and Jennifer Mary.
Are we going to executive session for...
Yeah, Matt, I'm sorry, Matt also.
Non-elected personnel. For a period of 10 minutes, starting at 9:15. Yep, 9:15. At this location. Include everyone stayed by their chair.
Okay, Department of Newton seconded to go into executive session for employee performance, non-elected personnel. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Now, Scott. Ain't seen you before.
He's bored.
Missing with you?
Yeah, he's bored. Not doing much.
I mean, her, her full-time pick is insurance.
Right.
And she has, right, and she's.
And he figured in. It's all figured in that book.
So it's all figured in.
Right, I see what you're saying.
So, like I said, it's, it's here to say goodbye, sure. You know, um, I just, again, I want to get the part of work, great busy work. Yes.
That would be up to you, you guys to determine that.
Yeah.
Wait to look at it and buy it.
And if, and if, uh, this system does come through.
Yep.
Long as they're going away.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there a, do you want them to hang out or they go on back? I don't know if there's any chairman.
No, I, I, I think you guys can head on back to work.
Okay, great.
Okay, all right, thanks for the information, really appreciate it.
Hi, John.
Um, if the company who's doing GPS, if all they can supply is GPS, we need to move maybe ahead with that? And is there another company that can help us with the document?
I, I did talk to them last week. Uh, they're, we finally got Jeannie and all of them connected and talking again. And so Jeannie's waiting on them to do a couple of things and they're waiting on Jeannie to come in. So, this Friday, they're supposed to be having another call and make sure those things got done. And then they'd like Monday to have a call, a Zoom call with all of us. That's, that's preparing.
A week on the screen, me.
A week for today on the chat. Have you guys signed, have they even purchased anything?
No, nope.
No. Same, same, uh, twenty twenty-four discounts still in place?
I think it may be. Uh, because he did say, you know, there's, um, every day they're getting a little calls from other counties. Getting a lot of, asking questions, because they offered up at that conference.
Yeah.
And they've got, what do you count, there's eighty-three counties in, uh, Kansas that use the start program.
Oh, a lot of that, wow.
And a lot of them won't go back to that, so a lot of them switched that, uh, pub tax on the laws and they kind of sold and now they can't get support, things like that, so a lot of them won't go back.
So each blade, each truck driver would have to have an I-D-A?
Basically, all your workers, everyone would, well, unless you set one up down here at Bridgeyard, then they just go in a certain.
That would, that's what I would refer.
Yeah, or a computer.
Or like, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, and then they would, they would be.
I mean, your, your, your blade operators aren't going to be able to do that, correct?
Why not?
Well, they're, I mean, they're not going to be able to come into the office and do it. So they're going to have to have something on site. So I'm just taking it out loud down at the void site, there can be one for all three of the employees to show up there.
Could be.
If that, if that's possible, I mean. What are the drawbacks to having each employee have to log in somewhere? Do you see drawbacks? Do you see?
Well, it, it's going to be quicker than the guy filling these out for a week and then he doesn't come right into another week in the office.
So doing it on a daily basis is going to speed things up.
Tremendously. Because like I said, some of these cars, they don't seem up here, you know, look, well, some of them, the guys will sit there and fill their cards out, drop them in the mail, you know, and give them a week later.
If you're lucky, you could.
And the thing, point we were in at the end of the day in the meeting out here was if, say, Mark goes out and drives a truck and he forgets to put down the start mileage and end mileage, he needs to put the end mileage and then he went out and drove that truck two days later and he puts an end mileage on it, then he turns his car in and he doesn't turn his car in for two weeks, then where, where do you go to find where that mileage started compared to the self?
Now, that's, that's kind of the standard.
The guy has to put certain things down on these cars.
Okay. Okay, so we'll ask for more information on the tenth. Do a, do a, do a, do a call. Okay.
So, so, uh, is, is it going to be your recommendation that we try this for a trial period of full time?
Yeah.
Okay.
Like I said, right now, we're waiting.
And.
We're on, we're on the way in to get.
Was this wage or where'd you figure that out?
Twenty-one ninety-one.
So that mounts it up to the, uh.
Yeah.
There's where it's at, it's up there.
Is that your recommendation?
I didn't hear what you said.
Twenty-one ninety-one would be the highest you could go, that'd be level three.
Okay.
With all your other issues, that's when the salary happens, that's what it is with about fifty hundred dollars on the policy.
That keeps you in, in your budget.
Yeah, you want to keep it within the budget.
So that was the highest I've ever, remember with that.
Now, we've got it, the gentleman's heart on March third.
But he's replacing somebody, correct?
Yes.
But you got like seven room spots, something like that.
Those were all factored into your budget?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. You've got the paperwork still?
I've got the paperwork, so is that what you want to go with?
That's fine.
Twenty-one ninety-one, is that what it is?
And just note in the minutes that this is beginning February one, that this is a trial basis. Uh, we'll reevaluate six months from February one. That way we're just reminding ourselves to have a conversation with you guys to make sure that, hey, is this still working? And I'm going to put it in my.
Yeah, trial basis, yeah. No, that's fine with me.
Just so it's known.
Have we raised six months on it?
I just put trial basis.
From February, are we going to get a time frame?
Six months. I, I would like a six-month timeframe. That way it forces us to come back and revisit and have the conversation. Six months. I I would like a six month timeframe. That way it forces us to come back and revisit and have the conversation.
Be about that at times, so that'd be good.
Correct.
Derek, what else you got?
Much. This is a list that I got from Christie the other day on minimum maintenance roads. And I don't know who typed the list up or where it came from, uh, but she's got much stuff on here highlighted in circle.
Uh huh.
That she has questions on.
Uh huh.
So I guess.
Yeah, we're.
What is, what are the questions?
That, I think that's the list, isn't that the list that we got?
You sent a paper, right?
From you guys that we published in paper?
That's what we published, yes.
Yeah.
That we're painting the line. Did one do it type it or?
It came from your department, that's all I know. I didn't know.
Nobody, nobody out there that will see.
The list, this list, that list, yes.
That's the list of roads that we were given that were supposed to be on the minimum maintenance list from Road and Bridge.
Do they Jackson County Resolution number?
Well, Lee typed that up.
Right, we just.
Typed that up.
Yeah.
But this.
But he would have got the information, I think, from that law.
Okay.
So.
Anyway.
Oh, go ahead.
It it looks like some of the stuff, there are just questions like, uh, is it really V six or W six on this one?
And and the maps that, uh.
We're finding these maps have not been updated and some of them aren't too accurate.
Well, and that's why, you know, like I'm, I'm going to make the recommendation that we rescind the resolution right now until we get everything straightened out. Because I really don't want to publish a list and then have to amend and write and amend.
I'm going to ask council though.
Yeah.
By rescinding that, we've already put the signs up and we're required by statute to have a resolution within ten days.
Well, no, we're part of the signs up within ten days.
Is there a good thing that by rescinding the resolution?
If there are roads out here that we still don't have signed, then we're going to be in violation of the statute, correct?
Not really, no. I I think you're, I mean, I think it's perfectly acceptable to go back and say, in another resolution, say, these ten roads are not supposed to be on the list. And these three are.
Without rescinding the.
Without rescinding the, you know, you tell me that ninety percent of them are a little wrong and I might change my mind, but it keeps me that if you guys have a, at least a solid start on it, I'd almost want to keep that designation in place because, you know, what's the harm in? I mean, if a road is signed and not in your ordinance, there really isn't any liability that I could tell you. Because, you know, nobody's going to do anything in reliance on that to cause harm, probably not a drive on.
If it's not signed and the statute said it has to be done within ten days.
Yeah, yeah, then that question becomes whether or not that is legally, you have relieved yourself of the liability for that road. I mean, that somebody goes on it and it turns out, you know, the the road is is on the list, but it is not signed. There's no sign.
Mm hmm.
What's the remedy? The remedy is not that the whole thing is about, I mean, the whole resolution is about. The the concept is you could use the minimum maintenance road protection on viability, right? So they went out there, they they, whatever happened, and they got their car trashed, right? And they said, well, you know, you're liable for that because of X, Y, and Z. And you say, oh, it was minimum maintenance road. Well, it's not a resolution. There's a sign up and it's really not a resolution. And then probably we're going to have to go at that one and say, yeah, but we made a mistake. It really wasn't the minimum maintenance road, so you don't have that protection. But that person went out the road that had a sign that said minimum maintenance road. So there's at least a good argument for their, uh, you know, attributable negligence sort of problem. You know, if if you go on something that you know is not supposed to, with your, you know, nineteen ninety eight holes, you know, and it's destroyed. You know, so of the, of the options, I think leaving it in place is far better than the danger on the outside that somebody escaped, you know, escapes the the liability issue. I mean, they 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 make you guys liable for the road when you wouldn't.
Okay, so this is what we published. Okay. So the yellow ones are here on the map. It was on. So.
So what are the orange?
The orange ones are.
What? Okay, so, yeah. Okay, so.
We've got something else.
We're not on this map?
They're not in the location. I circled the ones on the map. So are you pulling at seven minutes or where are you coming up with your? I took Kate's map that she has from minimum maintenance and I just went on to get to the resolution of the partnership. And I went through what was here and then I saw what was left on the map. Are there old resolutions out there or old minutes that we? Scott has found some of the old resolutions.
Yeah, I think the idea was is that this makes for an authoritative plan on this, right? And I, you know, I think it looks like there's probably at least eighty percent of them are right.
Well, and that's, that's why I was getting at is this list here, very first one is one and two road from V four to V six. And the question is, is it really go to V six or W six?
Correct.
Have you been typing?
And on the map, it was W six.
Okay.
So, uh, the next one is, uh, nine and tenth road from E two, or should that be E six? And going to G or just to F?
So somebody has figured it out.
Somebody, somebody has figured it out. Right, so to start in this process, that was what was supposed to have been done, is these roads were supposed to have been going out and physically looked at. Not look at a map and say, yeah, this is on a map here. And I'm trying to figure, I, let's, it's it's one road of the bridge, but we had a disconnect somewhere where it didn't get done. And now we published a list and we have things on it that aren't on the list, things aren't on the list that shouldn't be on the list. So we're going to have to go out and look at these roads, physically look at them.
It'd be my recommendation that maybe that be an additional, right, that's why, yeah, be additional job that if Mary's caught up, give her a pick up.
Right now, it's too many.
It, I understand that, but that may be something that, I I think she would be great at that. I mean, if if you guys are busy and you want to give her a list and she can just go out and if there's questions, she'll make note of that, come back and talk to you guys. Um, but she can do some verification if things get slack, that'd be, to me, that's another benefit of having her on.
Another, another thing that got lost in translation and all this is nothing was done, uh, down on the reservation.
Yeah.
No signs.
Um, I think we're, we're kind of hands off on that.
Right.
Guess we're just going to.
Why would that be?
Well, I think the question being is, I mean, are these roads that you guys normally maintain?
No.
Okay.
Okay, we don't maintain if this is not handled.
But we're still, there's still our roads.
Technically, there are, there's still our roads.
Yeah.
We've just given or granted permission to Prairie Van Patawata be how many years ago to take over the maintenance of the road.
That I would like to find too, for anybody who wants to find out.
I'm going to ask for, just as far as trial periods are considered, just to say, that's going to have to be special. Because I think, you know, one of the ultimate reasons to do this only is to, you know, you can say there's an allergic public aspect to it, but it's also liability. And I don't think that attaches to the truck. So if they're, if they're maintaining a road, right, because we just said, we're, it's our road and we'll fix it. Your guys' liability is questionable to my, to my understanding. They're, as a sovereign entity, their liability is even more. So, um, it seems to me there's probably a way to eat this off.
I, I, I agree with that. I'm sorry, I, I'm thinking back.
Ninety five of the talks here when they were working with the tribe in this reservation, uh, tried to get some of those things out.
I'd like a little more investigation done on that because there, again, if there are roads, then we still, we're still responsible for putting up stop signs, still responsible for putting a minimum maintenance signs.
Not if, not if we've granted them the, their, we've granted them the authority to take over the maintenance. So maintenance would include, they've put up their own street signs, we allow that to happen by granting them maintenance. And I can't tell what year.
Some of their street signs, their street signs are not on old roads, are they? I don't believe.
All the ones that they maintain.
Are they?
Yeah.
And I think. I think you might, I think you might be on this, I'm sorry.
And I read across the list out here the other day, it was on the back of the door of, uh, road on reservation that we take care of. So I made a copy of it and emailed it to Lisa Womiga down here and said, this is what I found, you know, of, uh, what we take care of on the reservation. And she's, she asked if I have an MOB on all the roads. What's the acronym for? Try to find out what the MOB is.
Oh, you say MOU is never ending.
Yeah. Careful.
Period?
I don't know. I don't know what they are.
In fact, I'm around with that, so it's best.
May I just propose?
Sure.
The time honored idea of eating the ultimate bite at a time. I I know legally that the roads, I'm working on that separately on the legal side of it, so I'm just trying not to jam two very different questions together. I think there's, if you guys, you know, put the energy into getting this list confirmed and getting a good list, then we're ahead of the game. And that's always going to be the case. If that list, you're going to ask, you know, people are going to come to you even after the fact because they didn't see the publication and they're going to say, this shouldn't be on there. You're going to look at it and actually go, you know, you're right, and then take it off. So this is going to be an inanimate thing, but, you know, so let's not put two difficult things together and make it impossible.
So could this list be given to the road operator operators to help verify too, or is that not easy?
I'd, I'd rather go out and actually see it instead of going by memory. Even if it's operator driven, I'd like to then go out and say, yes, this is.
Physically.
Go and look to that position or this location.
I just thought maybe when they were out and about, not that somebody else can't do it too, but maybe they had a list also.
Yeah, and that's what we're talking about, the list.
Okay, all right.
See what direction we're headed.
Maybe they could help too.
Yeah. So that, and that, I talked to Brandon Huntley this morning, he looked at this and him and Bryson started looking at those to here. And I think Noah was on I D road. I think there's a certain, so I want.
Right, right. I mean, yeah, that's what I mean, as they're out and about. I don't mean just look at.
And that'd be a good time to do this, since we're a little slow.
Yeah. Sooner rather than later, yeah, that'd be a good thing.
Okay, also, I found a file, I'll be done with that, I guess.
Yeah.
Uh, found a file out there the other day, uh, for like the, uh, roads for Mr. Roddy paid to have gravel put on. There's a few other ones in here that I found, uh, people had paid, um, not really anything tracking anything through of how it was done. If it went to register D, went to the brazers or anything like that. So got this letter here, um, there used to be one that I found in this file, uh, from Mary's Road in Rainy Falls, so it's not dated yet. Uh, kind of form of agreement between the constituent and the Road and Bridge Department. Where we get an estimate of the rock, how many miles the rock is about, how to drive it or whatever, and then put a checklist together to go through. Uh, these are people here, like I said, the ones that I found, I have all the information of what was done. But I'd like to start off in future here with this and we'll put it tracking across here of a work grab, new document and.
And then it would be trackable for future use and future maps.
And register Ds, go to the brazers, like everybody's.
Yeah, that should be done, yep.
And we can let Todd review that and make sure it's okay. At least it was copied and I put it in the old. Uh, we've got a new hire, uh, from the department too, so I'm going to sign off on him. He's already got his background checked and everything done. The guys, uh, were working in the shop down here the other day and trying to do some things with the saw and it's kind of dark in there, so we got a little fire in the way. We need to get us some newer lights and then add two lights and they're all service, so fourteen hundred and ninety eight dollars. Still a lighter in the shop down there.
Which shop is this? The?
Road and Bridge.
Oh.
Yeah. The back balls should be here today or tomorrow, in the tank, in the holder. Uh, we have a little salt in it. There are people not in the weather, people position, because they're talking about the main.
About Wednesday maybe?
Yeah. Bryson got a cylinder, gonna reseal this week on mid loader, dust control, uh, this is what we sent out. Need the size, this is what we're going to do the same this year, uh, as Simon also did last year.
You have a, a sentence in here that says there will be negotiation, there will be negotiations on the way to the county or private contractor will form the actual work.
That's what was under the board.
So.
It's, because before, you know, we would haul the gravel in the rock and the one out here on D road, we bladed it and everything.
Right.
So.
But have we ever used a private contractor to use something like that?
We have not.
The owner would?
Owner, owner.
Why would the, why would we allow the owner to use a private contractor?
It's just written in.
Right, so it.
You're just telling they may have, may have.
I'm not sure I like that in there. I don't know that I want, I don't know that I want there to be even an ability for a private contractor to commit. I, I mean, we want to hire a private contractor because we're busy, that's one thing. Does that make sense? Yeah.
I said, using the letter that was.
Made so phrase, if it was out here and and there were trees in the middle of it and we said, hey, you know what, we're going to get Joe's dozer to come out here and push those trees and go pop. We're, we as a county are making that decision, but there's not a negotiation between the lane owner on the sides of that road to make that determination. I, I, me personally, I just can take that out.
For, well, I, and that's fine with me. I can see, I can see a, uh, argument for some hiring somebody to haul the rock, especially we say, it's going to be three months from now because we're busy. But we could hire, get lucky and contract, contract to haul the rock.
They won't hire, we would hire at their cost. I'm not, I'm not in favor of allowing an individual to make that decision for us. I, I'm just not.
That's how you get off the right plate, too, you want to go up.
Am I explaining myself?
Yeah, to a certain degree, yes. Like I say, I'm, I'm, if if we say as Road and Bridge, that's going to be three months before we get somebody shaking loose to to haul rock.
Okay.
Then I think that would, that would be where the negotiation would come in between Road and Bridge and private individual to hire a private contractor to haul rock rather than wait three months.
Or or they might have their own equipment and want to do it themselves.
Are we okay with that?
Haven't.
Okay, that's my question. So we have allowed either the individual to build our road or haul the gravel in the past.
We installed it, I understand.
Well, I think we're something about completion.
Yeah. And that, and that, we've done that in the past where where individuals have gone in and built the road.
One of Dave Peters, haul the rock out there on, uh, two thirty eight in the past.
And he pays for it?
Well, he pays, yeah. These minimum maintenance roads that they, uh, he buys, must put a feedlot in there, post a rocket to that entrance. We come in, shape the road, and then haul the rock.
Okay.
That's what we've done.
Okay, long as there's no liability on our.
We still maintain.
Right.
So, so we are, we are actually building the road and then the rocks just be pulled in on what we have built.
Yes, yeah. Okay.
Todd.
So where do we come with the roads that are on here for dust control, just for my information?
That was what we did last year.
Okay, so why did we do these last year?
Obviously, those have been, well, I'll let you talk to it for me.
Uh, basically, we determined based on traffic counts, some of them.
Okay, I'm just curious.
So I'll give you an example, one forty-two runs from seventy-five highway all the way to W. That was done because that goes to the quarry. But because a lot of trucks turn on a T road and go north, we did T road. Because there was a lot of dump trucks and W road also. Then it goes south on W road and one thirty-four, and then goes over Jeff County. So a lot of trucks were running that one. We require them to run that way because the road going out of the quarry going east is not suitable for dump trucks. And so those were some of the decisions. Um, others were where.
High traffic, road like two fifty-four up here.
Correct, where it made sense because the amount of traffic created a lot of dust.
Two forty-six from seventy-five to the lake. That was a terribly, terribly situation there.
Uh, U four road, for example, from one forty-two all the way to ninety-four street, that is a main thoroughfare. We completely rebuilt that road, uh, three, almost three years ago now. We gave it two years to settle out, reshaped it, and now we're dust compliant. Mainly because the amount of traffic and it's a connector route to where they're going, people, a lot of people use that to go south to get into Vika. But it holds the road in place and we're not having dumped thousands of tons of gravel on it either. So those are some of them.
That's why, I was just curious.
No, good question.
The list on here.
And, and then when you start doing that, you need to dip two years in the road so it gets seeded into the material and it's there.
Typically, they'll come through and scarify it to break up that top amount, to reshape it, to get rid of potholes, that type of thing. Or sometimes, some cases, you add a little bit of gravel to it, um, just to reshape it, they wet it and spray it. But I see a huge benefit in and around the county, uh, because when, when the dust blows, that's a reminder that we need gravel, so. Yes.
On this, should I just go ahead and?
I got two more.
Okay.
I said, that was just a copy I had found, and I changed dates, names.
Okay, what, what is the policy that they perform for this, because I heard two different things. If you understood it is, you guys don't have a problem with private contractor hauling the rock to the, to the earth. But, but do you want a private contractor to actually build the road?
No, that would be the county's responsibility to come in, shake the road, build it.
That's what I thought I heard, so I want to make sure.
And once, and, and also, once the initial gravel is hauled, we're not allowing them to haul more from time to time unless they come to us and say, hey, we're willing to dump in another few trucks, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, well, that, I'll try to keep it in the spirit of the agreement and stop making the conversation wrong.
As lawyers can do.
Okay, so are we good with the dust control?
I'm still looking to.
Don't know if College Road, Road was ever on there or not.
I don't believe that it was.
It's not, it's not on your ass college.
It, it, Q or?
T road.
It's not there, I like that.
That's a main, that's a main road trying to keep kids off the highway from Jackson Heights coming in.
We did rebuild it last year.
Yeah, and we spent a lot of time and money rebuilding that last year. I think that was the initial, uh, conversation last year when we, when we did rebuild it was to dust control it that way. Keep the road the way it should be, so.
So then to your, but so one sixty-six is where they stop? Because typically, you know, cars are running somewhere else, but that's kind of on T road. Yeah, I'm finding this.
So they want to add College Road to that, T road from city limits to Jackson Heights? Is that what you want to do?
I would like to.
What, uh, I'd, I'd like to see some costs on that.
Has it had enough time to settle out? I mean, typically when we rebuild a road, we don't, I mean, we, we let U road go for two years just to, to maintain it or to let it, so, yeah.
So do you want to, do you want to look at budgeting that for next year?
We can.
Okay, then make a note on there to, to, uh, budget that in for twenty-five or twenty-six, it is twenty-five.
Uh, Matt's been in contact with the, uh, people out here at two fifty-four.
Telecom.
Telecom on that line.
Be locating it this week.
Okay.
Get that located so they can finish the bridge and this is the right thing.
And they are coming this week? Yeah, okay.
I didn't yell at them at all because basketball's what they were coming in.
Alright.
They need, need more contrite about it, something that, well.
Okay.
Okay, mulching, uh, we've got the one oh six, I to H is done now. Working on J, one oh six to ninety-fourth right now, I'm sorry, that's done, and he's working on ninety-four J to K.
Running the machine, nothing matters, I might land it.
Train.
And break, and break, that's good, we got a couple guys.
Keep it trained. You got to get it trained.
Yep, exactly right.
Cool. And as Jim mentioned too, you know, we're, we are running across some things in the startup program, um, such as this here. Kind of shows your gravel roads, maintenance roads, things like that. How to date that is, I don't know if we've got it yet, we just ran into this right. So if we can do something on our own, we'd like to do that too, just to.
So basically, you would, you would put somebody on that once we get back your list, and they would input that in the startup program?
But once it's in, once it's in, shouldn't have to change it whenever we want.
Yeah.
Whenever we have.
Mine needs to keep it up to date.
That's, yeah, just keeping it up to date.
That's making sense, a lot of the stuff, there's been, you know, this person, this person, this person here, nobody long enough from, you know, the names anymore here. So it's, you know, the, the system.
On that list, did you have, did you have the extension down on T road to the gentleman who went from the end of T road? Uh, from one eighteen? One eighteen and T, he did eleven thousand dollar road extension down there two years ago? I just want to make.
I don't believe so.
Oh, yeah.
Do you remember that one?
I know exactly.
So.
What's that again, T?
Yeah, it's T and, uh, one eighteen. It was gravelled up to the second house, now there's a third house, and he did an extension up there. I don't know that he's living in that house yet, but the house is almost done.
Right, and they did, they did pay for it.
Work's been done for a long time, and they paid for it, yeah, because Wade was still here, I remember Wade going out and meeting with the guy and, and so, so it's just.
So that would be one that needs added to that list.
Right, that's the only one I can recall in my district.
Okay, like, like, so I remember when doing the D road down here in two fifty-four, going like seven hundred and fifty something feet of that front house.
Do you want this back? Can't lose Christie doing that yet.
You think that's for us?
Don't believe so. I got a, that one call that I made to you, I got a call from Lonnie, asked me about it, and, uh, he was out there looking at it then, so. He said, that looks like I could, I could haul it for, other than that, I don't think I can, I think I'll check that way.
I, I don't have any.
We're trying to get our trucks out, moving around and hit some of these floodspots before it comes flooding.
Yep.
Yeah, or the blades kind of hitting, hitting, if there is some snow left, get some spots to kick, kick it back in case we do have, like. I'm trying to think, down at the bottom of the hill there on one thirty-four, bridge there, and there's a little bit of snow on the side that's just running across, if they could kick it on and off.
Yeah, which I can.
Yeah, I mean, that's just something, if they're looking for something to do.
I, I ran that some roads the other day, and there was, you know, road that grates, and then there's a pile of snow, and there was some.
That's what I'm talking about.
Man, that'd be great to kick that off, but.
If you kick it back there off.
If you get out there in that and get stuck.
Yeah, that's true.
Then you have a mess.
We need your inventory for the road and the bus services.
Did that inventory?
Did you borrow everything or what? They've not got the inventory for Road and Bridge for the trucks and everything, and we were never really fighting for this now.
That's an angel thing though.
But everybody else gets to fight.
Well, I mean, typically.
We're getting lists.
Uh, I'm making lists, that should have.
We can send you what you had last year, also, if anyone else has asked for me.
Yeah, okay, alright.
And I, just, just so you guys know, I did get a compliment Monday night that another gentleman stopped me and said, this is the quickest, that his roads got cleaned off, this is the best it's been. And he was really appreciative, appreciative of it after the storm, so, just so you guys know, pass that on to guys.
Thank you, awesome.
Thank you. Tim, how you guys doing?
Good, how are you all?
Doing great?
So, uh, what I'm, what I'm talking about today is the eight hundred meters tower lease agreement that we've been working on forever. Appreciate Tom for all of his work, but then I went through it and made the corrections and you're.
Yeah, I'm good with it.
You're good with it. So, I've got the grant extended out till May, which is a cumbersome, so I'm hoping to get this, uh, done, so. We've received, we already have, uh, the city's already gone to eight hundred on A E S correction, and, uh, we're not ready to that point yet. And, uh, so, I don't know, the fire department's course, all of them got their, I think they got their radios, I guess, and I don't know exactly where I don't know.
I believe that they're all dispersed, I believe.
I think, I thought they were.
Yeah.
I knew some of them were, I didn't know if they were all, but anyway.
Yeah, they, they got them all programmed and got mapped all the.
So we're hoping that we get this underway because we still have some work to do. We, we ended up having to, we ended up getting to do, this, this system that we got was basically going to be out of date by twenty thirty-two. So, uh, we raised an objection there, and, uh, it's a decent way to start, start out, so. So, uh, about cost, they did the change order, and so we're, we still haven't received all the equipment yet, so. Once that, once that comes, we can start, uh, handling antennas and installing equipment, so, anyway. But they already have a copy that they, I didn't bring.
I didn't, so I didn't, no, I didn't have one, I didn't.
What do you, what do you want me to do then?
Um, well, do you have like a official one there that's clean and all that?
Yeah.
I don't know, if you guys, you guys are welcome to look at it.
Do you tell me or you looked at it, alright?
Yeah, I mean, I looked at it and said everything's good, so.
While I enjoyed it thoroughly, I'm not really.
I bet you did.
Yeah.
Few things that you, uh, did, he was put the, uh, Kansas cash basis law in there. Uh, it, this was their standard contract they gave us, so there was a section there for paying property taxes, we don't pay property tax, uh, and so forth. There's a few things that, uh, taught me to change, and so, uh, looks obviously important.
Okay, you're happy with it, Paul's happy with it?
I am, and also I just wanted to clarify on signing it, uh, they, they have my name on there, but, uh, I think we're not getting authorization from them.
Yeah, you would, you could either, do it either way, you guys could change that to sign it, or you could give your approval to the sheriff. That would bind the county to that too.
And I, I think that since, you know, I think that probably you all just signed it, that's my, that's my opinion on it.
I'm fine with that.
So it's general consensus of all, that you just go ahead and sign it?
I'd like a motion to, yeah, this can do.
Okay, so could I get a motion to, uh, please, uh, Sheriff Tim Morris to sign the contract for the tower?
It's a move.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded for Sheriff Tim Morris to sign the contract for the tower, any more discussion? See, none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Do, uh, we have another issue, uh, on the security issue, so, is it be okay to?
Well, if it's the security of the grounds here, I mean, you could do an executive session for security purposes, um, for this area. Or, or a.
It's been building.
Yeah, you guys in building?
This one here.
Oh, okay, sure, yeah, this, we can do an executive session if we reveal.
I'm, I'm, go ahead.
I'm going to go into executive session, uh, for.
Ten to fifteen, or ten minutes?
Ten minutes, starting at ten thirteen, uh, for matters of security. Uh, security of public buildings, of public buildings to include sheriff, undersheriff, attorney, Christie. Yeah, ten, okay, just clicked over to ten, ten fourteen.
Go here a second.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to go into executive sessions with the above the people to, for matters of security, public buildings. All in favor, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carried. All opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Right, I mean, now that the new building is open at Man Lake, we, I think it came to the agreement that if it's a county agency that needs to use it, there's no charge.
Yeah, we, we tried to rent it and it was, we ended up renting a fairground building, which is training that we're hosting.
Right.
And, uh, they were more expensive, so we.
Right, but there wouldn't be any charge to your office if you're going to, if you're gonna host some sort of conference and it's the sheriff's department or road and bridge or senior citizens are gonna do some kind of event, they're gonna be able to get on, get with curbs, but there'd be no charge, um, other than, as long as it's clean.
Right.
To their benefit, save you money is what I was getting at.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think you said there would be like clean charge and have some inter落下 or something, yeah, so.
But if, if, if you're not, I mean, if it's clean to their standards.
Yeah, or.
There wouldn't even be a charge.
We should have, yeah, that's all.
One would thank.
Okay, well, thank you.
Yeah, just give it that.
Jonathan, how are you?
Christie is, is the commissioner, uh, fund capital outlay on here of this report that you gave.
Everything would be under the one outlet, if I can run first.
Okay, so it was the end of the one outlet of four million eight hundred thousand. Yeah, I just, yeah, we could run a, run that. The only thing with the special alcohol fund is we have to make sure all the appropriations typically.
And like opioid money is, what, what do we use that for? Is that anything that can be used?
Goes back to the sheriff.
Goes back to sheriff completely?
That's what we've been doing with it.
Okay, I, I know for sure.
He had some expenses there in creating, I wanna say this, outside of executive session, he needed a space created. Um, and so he's been using that money for that.
Okay.
Which was like, the alcohol, the alcohol, like, we just wanna make sure that whatever we normally appropriate out of there.
There's forty thousand.
That we would know what's left over for the year, so we don't.
This is the one to look at.
Over to that.
There's forty thousand dollars in the, in the market.
And that was, I think that's what we took the post-prom out of, didn't we?
What?
Yeah.
What, what was that, Mark?
I think that's what we just took post-prom out of, that's why we take post-prom and things out of.
The special parts, correct?
No, the alcohol thing.
The alcohol thing, correct.
Yeah, it has forty thousand dollars.
Right, but there's other things already committed to it, so I just wanna know what is committed to that.
Right.
And typically.
Sorry, wasn't that on that, uh, one sheet that you had with the Jackson, World Valley post-prom?
Yeah.
I think it's already, actually already got to bring it up.
Yeah, but there are other things that come out of here.
Right.
Yeah.
I just wanna know what the balance would be before we give any more funds out of it.
Right.
Alcohol fund, so we have to be careful of what we're spending.
Yeah, and it comes every quarter.
But if, yeah, there is a, there is.
Right. But then if we have a commissioner's capital outlay, that's. I mean, I already saw these things were probably outdated.
Yeah.
You don't know how many times that we've had a discussion in our office.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where's this, what's this?
Um, John wrote that for you guys.
Oh, John did, oh.
This is just a webinar?
What's that? Yeah, I'll see this, you guys can teach it. You think? Yeah, it's, it's good because it's really more about the police side of it, it might be using under damage or situation. I've seen this, Jeremy Campbell did it for Edison when I was there and I shared a lot of hard one experience.
So, you, you would say it'd be a good thing for us to look at?
Well, I think, like I said, you guys kind of already had your time in the barrel, so, um, I, I leave it up to you, but I was just saying the perspective is a little different than what we may have gotten because it tells you like when the sheriff came in here, what, what he had to deal with.
Okay.
What he was thinking more than, and that can help, may help you guys with that.
Give us a better understanding.
Yeah, for both of you, so I would, you know, it's, it's, that's the. Thank you. Graciness on this.
And that's, that's like fifty dollars, if, if we did as a webinar here and all decided on it, we'd all have to do the one fifty dollar thing, right?
It's not a big camera.
Huh?
It's not a big camera.
Yeah.
Yeah, usually the league is not so great on the good stuff, but. We, we got something here. Do you wanna talk to me individually? Okay, all of the outside gentlemen.
Okay. Is this supposed to be what, two thirteen?
So, we're looking at capital outlay?
Yeah.
And here's all the different capital outlays, right, there's commissioner capital outlay, as you can across.
Sorry, okay.
So, the top sheet that you gave us, Christie, has a number of nine thousand eight eighty-one dollars sixty-two cents of current expenditure expenditures. But on the other sheet that has all the department expenditures, under current expenditures, the numbers are different.
Okay.
It's nine sixty, nine thousand six hundred thirty-three and thirty-five.
So, the top sheet is county general fund, no just commissioners, this sheet is all capital outlay?
Right, I understand that, but under commissioners, if you follow across, the expenditures for the commissioners should be the same as this number right here.
This is out of the capital outlay, these expenditures came out of capital outlay.
I understand that.
These expenditures are out of county general, your, your commissioners line item and county general.
Yeah, commissioners line item is county general, which is the O O one fund and outlay is the O five O fund, so we're gonna have two different plans there. Maybe I'm not understanding what you're asking.
Like the payroll and all that, C I C payroll, this is all, this is county general, which is commissioners fund.
Not commissioners outlay.
Right, and these, and these and commissioners outlays on there, everybody's outlays on here, right?
Right, I understand that part, but this, so what was the purpose of this sheet?
That is just to show what you guys have in your budget, so this is your actual.
The, a budget, okay.
Yeah, because I love to, why you gave this, that's why you did it.
Okay, so it's just a coincidence that they're backflowing?
Yeah.
You don't have an extra ruler over there, do you? What do you mean?
What do you mean?
I said, oh, there, I said a ruler, I answered she had an extra ruler, that's okay, I can use these places in a way.
Well, I can't read it, Abby doesn't have a, uh.
I didn't have it work.
What do you want?
What? Yeah, give me one, thanks. When it's a little print like that, it's like, okay, and a lot of, right on. No, that's okay, I can read it once I can go across.
Find less.
I'm not quite that bad.
Okay.
I got contacts, see, it's, it's all in across.
All right. So, getting back to what I've reached earlier, so would it be possible to pull, we'd have to talk to the department heads, uh, pull money out of each one of their, if they would donate part of their budget to fund this?
And, and, and Mark, I, I would agree with you, but we also, there's also another fund for, to me, we're approving the building.
Right.
So, we have the building fund.
Yeah, no, like what, fifteen, fifteen? Can I see that on there?
Let's see, should be a couple hundred thousand in the capital outlay for the, uh...
Fort House Building Maintenance, yeah, two seventy-one.
Two hundred and seventy-one thousand?
Yep.
Yeah, I could just pull it out of there, because it's an improvement to the building. That, that's just, I don't get it.
And I'm, I'm in line with that, that's got some pretty good balance, and we're offsetting or trying to put money back in there for the, these super bales or anything like that, and...
Or do you half out of commissioner and half out of the building maintenance?
What's that?
Or do you half out of commissioner and half out of building maintenance, split it?
But this is still general, I mean...
Because we're trying, I mean, we've got, uh, this out here, the manhole, that's been come out too, and we don't know what that's gonna be yet.
Thank you.
Probably pass it back, we don't think we gotta, you don't know the pass or back from anybody about what the manhole repair is gonna cost, you know? I'm guessing that's gonna be a little pricey. So...
Shouldn't it have a number for the appropriation?
Oh, okay, so she didn't put it, she, she didn't put it in there?
It shouldn't have come out with two seventeen, it should have come out with twenty-one.
Oh, okay, I was like, there's no way it could be that.
This is not my thing for this afternoon, it's why I'm here.
I guess we're the end of that, I'm sorry.
We probably pull it out of the election. No?
Um, I'm glad you brought that up, let me talk to you.
No. Huh?
Do you have a night?
Yes.
Who needs a night?
About me, huh? I've got nothing to do, I... I can bring it up.
I'm gonna call Alfred and see if he can schedule it.
He's not down right now.
So there are no other place down there you could go?
I don't understand... I don't understand why they're doing that.
I know.
What, what is that?
My, uh, we had, the election points, they want two hundred dollars rent a day, and then they pay for three days, and I refuse to do that, because that's tax exempt.
And where are we currently, at the Capitol Church?
Yeah, which, that's...
I never had this issue.
Can I call somebody who is, who just make one phone call, and then I'll see if I can find some information out, why they have to move out?
Well, she said we're supposed to sign, I had to get my bill of insurance this year, which I did, I went to our insurance company, that are like, they'll be insurance if they ask me to. But then they say that they have contract and non-members, I believe it's two hundred dollars a day, and they want me to pay for the day I drop off, unless they have to pay me back.
I'm just totally bamfuzled by why.
Because we've always just sent forty-five dollars as a donation, I mean, I can have my donation, but it's taxpayer money for something I have that.
Yeah, what, what's the little investigation through that and see what we come up with? You call your people, we'll call our people and see what they come up with, because that's just ridiculous.
Well, I talked to Maryland, is that where they're doing it?
Yeah.
And we kinda had a difference of opinions.
Is there any other sites in, in that area?
There's another church down there that I haven't went to make sure it's ADA accessible.
That's the whole thing.
They offered to move me to the base, but I'm not doing that. If I have to, I'll probably try and see if they have to.
Okay, let me...
Let's, let's, let's do some talking on this, uh, when's your next election?
Well, but see, I have to change my location, I've got time to change it.
Public it, we all like this stuff, so, but that's clear by, that's clear in...
Well, you could have a special, you know.
Well, this is true, but... Give me, give me...
I'm not gonna go all that long, it's time to go. We, we will have an election this fall because of the...
Yeah, this fall.
Because of the, uh, sales staff, yeah.
But that'll go with the work of balance.
Yeah.
Correct, it won't be a special.
So we'll have that question anyway, so...
Who's he back?
I don't know.
Who?
Father. I think he's back sometime this next week, I believe, because he's supposed to be there next week, next Saturday. So just, just let, let us do some talking, we'll see if it comes up something, because I don't, I don't hear that.
I don't think, I think I haven't stopped him.
Really? No, I don't think it is, and that's what...
Yeah, it's down at that end, by the...
No.
I meant down there.
It's in the office here.
Okay.
Okay, yeah. Okay, enough said, let me look into it.
I mean, I can't justify paying, um, six hundred dollars to have a tour on the election.
Do we get to use the white community building for a break?
I, I send the donation out of forty-five dollars, and that's what capital is there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll bring that up.
So you bring it up on your end, we'll bring it up on our end, see if we come up another...
I just don't think I should have to spend taxpayer dollars for something that they have to have.
Right. All right, so, in looking at these funds then, uh, I think one's got a good idea pulling half of it out of commissioner and half of it out of the Fort House Building Maintenance, because, like I say, we're gonna have the, we're gonna have the manhole out here, we're gonna have to fix the spring, I'm not sure how much that's gonna be, and this is gonna be a little bit pricey. Do you have something to say? What do you think? And... I'm, I'm almost, I'm looking at those as a safety factor for, for down at the health department. In, in the, honestly, the, the, uh, Amanda's, and Senior Center.
Does one bridge company have their own system?
Nine-one-one.
I think they have a security system or anything like that.
Yeah, I just, as I've stated before, I just hate spending more money on something that's not been an issue.
Correct.
Um, to my knowledge, in, in, I mean, you can call Amanda, I just, in, in the health department, if they wanna fund it, if the health department wants to fund it...
Well, I'm sure we can always add on buttons if they can get down there, but, uh, like I say, I'm, I'm...
I mean, we're not doing it for Dr. Swede, we're not doing it for, uh, Road Bridge, we're, you know... I just, if, if we haven't had an issue, why spend the money?
Because any more, you don't know.
We haven't had an issue in here.
Yeah.
But not to the degree that we have been having, right?
I mean, we've had it, the likelihood here is greater than it would be at a senior citizen center.
Um, I'll, I'll agree with you on that.
Uh, that's just my thought, I mean, you know, they're a hundred and forty-one dollars a piece, so you're gonna have to add two more of those, plus whatever technology they would need to make it work, and we, that's a complete unknown.
Yeah, and that's the unknown, whether they need a booster or whatever, so let's, let's kind of hold off on that and look at just doing what we have right now, and if we need to add that on. If we need to add that on, we can add that on later.
What was that person?
In county general, the carryover, the estimated cash carryover last year was, I believe, was a two point three, and I'm actually, carryover two point eight, so you do have one little amount of money on it.
We didn't, so the commissioner's carryover into their, to be put into their capital outlay, and what was budgeted last year, was how much? I have to see that, and this five oh eight one eighteen is an accurate number, and what did we carry over from last year? And has that been added into that five oh eight? Do you want a motion on this part?
I think I might want, yes.
Well, um, we purchased the waiver plus proposal for Jackson County, uh, system upgrade, you know, fourteen thousand three hundred seventy-four dollars, have to be paid out of commissioner's capital outlay, have to be paid out of building maintenance, uh, capital outlay.
Go ahead, a second.
I second that.
Okay, if we properly moved the second to purchase the waived, uh, system upgrade for a total cost of fourteen thousand three hundred seventy-four dollars, uh, do I hear any more discussion? No further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign, question carried. Do you want to get a sign in? And will you let Tim know that?
And so last week, did we need to let Ed know, or was, I can't remember, Scott was still on here, that we were gonna waive the fee on the, dumping of the...
I think that...
Historic society?
I thought you said you was gonna let him know.
He was gonna let, no, okay, I thought about that later, I didn't know.
What, what was that?
That we let Ed know for sure that we were gonna waive the fee on historic society.
Oh, well, Scott...
Was he in here yet?
Well, Scott should have.
I thought he said he was gonna do it.
Okay, that's fine, okay.
We can double check.
I just thought...
With Scott.
Yeah.
Sometimes Ed thinks he's left out, so I just wanted to...
Right.
Ed knows that.
Be sure. I thought about that later. So on the late agreement then, this would be like a separate thing they would sign, right?
Well, yeah, I'm thinking after looking at what they'd be, you guys be mean, and you have like...
You texted Scott?
Yes. Oh, you're gonna...
Get four documents.
Send them both to him.
I'm thinking, uh, the agreement, you'd have, then you do a rate schedule, which is the first page that, kind of, that had, um... Yeah, that's, that was, that seemed to me to be, like, you could just have rates on there. They, they transfer some of this to rules and regulations for them, you know, so they could change it easily if they figured out, well, we did, we need to have a rule against this. We need to have a part of it, or we need to have whatever.
I have, I did a couple questions on there, uh, under section four, miscellaneous terms. Should we put smoking and vaping is not permitted, because...
Vaping?
Yes, because otherwise they'll, they'll take that as technicality and...
And it, this says keys on here, and I think they're just gonna give them a keypad code, right? There's no keys gonna be handed out anywhere?
I don't know.
I know he's got a keypad, and then there's something about, you know, doing thumbprint or something.
Yeah, I don't think there were gonna be any keys involved, maybe not, so...
Okay, that's a good point.
That's what I'm pretty sure he said.
And, then back on section...
Is that, is that the code that changes then?
Yes, he can change the code.
Each time, y'all give them a different code to get in or out.
That's a problem that would involve...
Oh, that'd be a good idea, well. You can keep track of it.
There you go. Uh, section nine, enters and additional agreements required. Do we do something like this when somebody's hosting a beer garden out there on the property?
I'm sorry, what?
Do we do the, like, five, five hundred thousand dollar liability insurance when somebody hosts a beer garden out here?
I believe they have to have their own insurance, and then they have to fill a special out.
Okay, that's what I was curious about, so that is a kind of common practice then?
That looks like this one here, was like private an episode, this agreement.
Okay.
I was actually thinking that was pretty good, as, already, I didn't really have, you know...
I just didn't realize that we already, we already did that, I didn't know if that was something that we need to look at for here on the yard or not.
I think if you guys have, if there's a, like, a public celebrations specifically, like, you know, some kind of parade or event or something, if you guys have that, I think you would, you, normally I have the, kind of, buy a rider, the policy is not included.
Okay.
Because you get, I mean, I've seen it done both ways, the insurance policy says, whatever you do, you're gonna have the fall festival in, you know, the beer garden, so that's in there already, and you're paying, you say, I pay a hundred bucks for a rider.
Okay.
Or they, I've had it too, who said, go to your insurance company, you know, hunt for it or whatever, and say, we need a rider for how much for that, and you do it, and that's your insurance.
Right.
Uh, the only other way is, you know, they're getting coverage for themselves too. But what you're doing is giving, you know, potential, potential loss to the shiny object for the chase actors, and you...
So I guess like what I'm saying is, so, you have a wedding party out there, a wedding dance, whatever, and people bring your own cooler. How does that affect, because it's, in any use or sale of alcohol, well, so it's private individuals bringing a cooler, how does that come into play?
Well, I mean, that's, you know, the policy that you're allowing. The two levels are, of course, that if you're just allowing it and it's not being sold, that's, you know, I could see there may be an argument where you guys wanna waive insurance on that, but I don't know if that's the case. To my mind, that's the question, do you think that if somebody has an event where their insurance, you know, I think surgery is opposed to...
Right.
BYOB has posed, or, and not charging, right?
Yes.
They have a bar, it's free, you know...
Well, that I can see they would, if, if they were having a bar, I could see them having the insurance. If they were doing setups or something like that, I don't, I don't necessarily see the five hundred thousand dollar insurance, see where I'm coming from on that. Or they're bringing their own coolers.
Okay, well, that may be a distinction that you guys could outline here, and, you know, it's policy choice, because, I mean, you guys are sure, insured for the property, you've got court claim protection. And the only thing that this policy does is they have it, I mean, they protect themselves. And they, that's what I'm saying, if they have a five hundred thousand dollar insurance policy to go after, instead of you, instead of camp, I mean, if somebody gets hurt out there, as far as, you know, they drank too much and took the type of ability to fall off, they would, they would sue the people who had the event and the camp.
And we're already covered.
Yeah, you're covered, and they're not, so, and, so they would say, well, there's no money there, thus go after the individual, and they don't have anything to take, so let's, you know, all we can get is what, from the camp. Whereas if they have insurance policy, now they have another half million, at least on the...
But it should be, it, it should be up to the individuals, if they're having a wedding out there and they have an open bar.
Well, yeah, you're saying, if you're saying that gives us an extra pocket, Chase, you know, to, to just cover it, right? It's not the counties, but the individuals, and, you know what I mean? So, it just gives that much more available money for somebody to get...
So why wouldn't you just include that in every event under the fee?
Well-
I mean, if, and how are you gonna, I mean, you're saying to an individual, you gotta go out and find this insurance.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's just, that's why we got this, we're in this discussion. I think the levels that I see are, like you said, which is there's no official, it's just, let's do this party, and people bring their own drinks. Nobody says anything, but we do anything. Second of all, you have a bar that's free. And you don't, nobody has to bring their stuff, and we supply it. But you still don't make anybody pay for it, and you don't have a license to do anything, so you don't sell it. And the third level is, you actually have somebody there to sell it, or providing as part of the, you know, food or whatever, food and beverage. They would have a caterer's license for a temporary payment.
Which that is, that is covered under what? Did I saw that in your, what's that covered under, the second paragraph section four, Miss Lady's terms?
Yeah.
The catered license there, yeah.
Yeah, so what do you need insurance for them to have their own insurance for? Well, I don't know if the caterers who have their own, maybe they would. If they have a liquor license, you know, caterer's license, maybe they're supposed to have it.
I would think they would have to, yeah, I don't know.
So, so the question then probably, what would, what would you want them to have, you know, they consciously provided alcohol as, you know, the, the issue kind of being, I think, you get these, kind of, things that separate out the, I'm bringing, bringing my cooler just because it's part of it, right? Versus I'm supplying, which means the person who came on to the property as an invitee of you, you folks, being, you basically invited them because you opened this up for public use. So you are creating a connection to them, liability, it's no matter what they drink. No alcohol, alcohol, whatever. So do you wanna have protection? And actually protection, like I said, doesn't add much except for my sort of theory that there's more money, or to satisfy a claim, meaning if you're, if you gotta pay for those a hundred thousand dollars, if you got available to you half a million in coverage, or a million dollars coverage total, this is more.
Well, okay, here, I'm just, I'm just asking questions, so I don't know. The, uh, second or third paragraph in section two, doesn't that effectively hold us heartless from the guy who goes out, drinks too much, gets up on the roof, jumps off, and breaks his neck?
Yeah, it's supposed to. That's what that is.
But they can still sue us anyway? I mean, they can still sue us, but if that paragraph is in place, then how?
Yeah, they, they indemnify, and that's why. I mean, basically they're saying, they can't, you can't stop somebody from suing, but what you're, they're saying is, is that you go after them, right, for this indemnification clause. So, you know, your position's not gonna change, because you still got the insurance in case this fails, but you're only seeking indemnification, right?
Okay.
So what happens if that's an empty shit? They, they don't have any money to indemnify. They don't have a policy. I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't stop them suing you, and it doesn't stop the insurance company from needing all. That's all it says, and that's all you can ask.
Okay.
Which is why, if you're saying, we wanna be immunized from suit, you know, that's, that can't be done and keep this open in any real sense. So-
Okay.
So that's why maybe, you know, it's just, and, and at this point, it's probably a question too of like, in the sense that I'm having all adults here, you know, the, the chance for injury or damage goes up, and alcohol.
Right, okay, no, that's, that's a good discussion. I'm, I'm glad you explained it that way, so that, that makes more sense. So then the only thing that, that I see that I would put in there would be the vape, smoking and vaping is not permitted.
So what did we agree to? That, that each individual who's gonna sell alcohol, there must have insurance?
Sell alcohol, that there's, yeah, sell alcohol.
Okay.
Because that, that comes back to the, where did I say that at? Uh, that comes back to the third, second paragraph under Miss Lady's, I believe it is, sale of alcohol, it averages-
Yeah, the use.
Beer deals marked sale of property, license used, right, evidence he said, perform a proper licensed catering.
Well, that, this is the use or sale, so probably should say sale.
Probably should say sale, not use, because-
That's what the vision you're talking about.
But the average individual that's gonna rent it, and have an open bar for whatever, bar mitzvah, wedding, whatever, they're not gonna be required to get the five hundred thousand dollars.
I believe it said that they are going to have
No, that's, this is-
In any use or sale of alcohol. So I would almost say on that, 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 yes, they would have to for a use, if they're gonna give it away free, they would have to have that five hundred thousand dollars.
Isn't that kind of section nine?
Yeah. Yeah, that's what, that's what we're saying. I think that if there is, like you say, somebody goes out to an open bar, that's there, if they just have setups, and it's BYOB, then I would say no.
Yeah, I, I mean, I just wanna get to a point where it simplifies, because to me, this sounds like a nightmare.
What, and I'm curious what, uh, what Northeast Kansas does.
I don't know.
That's basically-
What Kirk did is basically theirs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I mean, as far as the insurance policy, I mean, I don't know if they, if they require one or not, I'm not sure.
And, and why would it just be included in fees, so that if you're paying five hundred dollars to rent a facility?
Hang on, I'm calling Scott.
It's-
Hello? Yes. Remember we asked you in the last week to talk about that, for this waived the fees? Yes, 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 we just wanted to make sure that you had notified Ed for whenever they start bringing stuff out, that that was done. Okay, well, they're gonna be bringing it out to Ed, so she should probably let him know, so that's what we're, that's what we're discussing. That, that way he knows, he's not calling in in front to find everything out, so. All right. Yep, it's up later pipe. So what's your thoughts on that? Keith?
I'm pulling up their website, I wanna read what they have on the website.
Well, I think, uh, we did, this is what I got with the stuff. There was already a complimentary service of alcohol before. Which I thought was pretty good, which I thought was gonna be part of this. Yeah, I think that's, they're covering both, they're saying, basically, you have, if you have an amendment where you have a bar, unpaid, you know, not cash, it's a complimentary bar, and you're still be covered under this, you get, you, it's a part of it, I think was, they got policy, made sure.
Okay.
Yeah, probably it'll, it'll be up to Kirk to make sure that happens, so.
So, so the KSA number that he quoted down here on the back of this thing? What is that, the seventy-five dash sixty-one oh one?
I think that's the Kansas Park Clean-
Park Claims Act, which?
Well, it basically says that any governmental entity like the county is limited in liability for certain-
Okay.
Issues.
Okay.
The, and what it does is limit liability in most circumstances to have many bodies.
'Cause he probably didn't put an insurance thing out here.
Where did I see that?
On his private event thing, agreement.
And then it must've been in the rules.
Somewhere else?
Yeah, it's in the rules, there is first, there is a rules. Will include alcohol, the renter must obtain insurance right or submit a copy. So basically, that's the term I put in the agreement.
Okay.
'Cause I wanted to get the rules to be more formal, the grills, you know,
Sorry.
Cancellation time, grills. Probably the most smoking need by there, so.
Oh, down here, let's see.
Very foggy.
Okay, very foggy, then. It's not, and Kurt's, who has the part of it, has it.
Uh, did you get this, Kurt, to look at it?
I did.
No, go ahead.
Not attention, to handle, so. But I, you know, almost, like I said, I just got this thing done, so, um, I don't know, maybe this is where, whether you wanna them to create it or you wanna me to create it, is the question is, the attached documents, to my mind, like I said, there's this agreement, there's three other things, right? So, rules and regs, which is what I think this sheet kinda is.
Mm-hmm, right.
The rate schedule, which is just the rates and some basic rules on that. And then this private event facility, alcohol use agreement, maybe I also have a bit, but it's pretty good. So those would be the three things, so you got back to there, and then what signs up that they would do.
Okay.
And so, I think probably, but it, it's just confusing right now, because like I did, I pulled this from there and moved it here.
Right.
I pulled a couple of things, and permits, to put it in the agreement, so this, I think, is probably pretty well unchanged.
Okay.
So if you want, then I can, the vaping change, I guess I don't know if we can go to final on the use or sale, use can sale, use for sale. Keys.
Okay.
That'd be enough time, if you just read something later on, if you gotta figure out that, email us.
Sure.
Make this process, and I don't know, actually, if Kirk, uh-
We should probably give a copy of Kirk's.
Yeah, we could copy this, Kirk, let him read it over, uh, maybe else, have you more discussion on that?
Uh, yeah, somebody, somebody, I don't know if that's, I, I could send it, right?
I was, then, you gonna send Kirk's email?
And that may help too, is he have work, I had probably wanted to send work versus some of this stuff.
Yeah. I'm sure he probably does.
Mine is foggy here, is that, I don't know if I was being called on.
You're being called on, what do you got?
Well, I just wanted to give you a notice of this, it's not, um, it's not something you probably have on your radar, maybe not, but this is the danger of Kansas Legislature, there's a new house bill. This house bill two zero eight eight. The, long and short of it is, is that this bill would require fast tracking of certain permits and other required approvals for real estate development. I mean, your planning commission would be on a fast track, or your zoning administrator, whoever would be forced to be, to do certain things within sixty days if this bump passes.
Okay.
So they would require, like, if you had, and some of this may not be so difficult, a lot of building permit would have to be done in sixty days. And also, certain plating, zoning changes, appeals have to be done on a fast track.
Well, I, okay, I have a question on that right there. So building permit would have to be done in sixty days? If, if the builder had certain requirements that they have not fulfilled within that sixty days, in order to get the building permit, what happens then? We still gotta give it to them?
Well, I think that, yes, I think that you say you have to have a decision, probably, so it would be a denial of-
Okay.
Permit. I don't think they take away the ability to deny the permit, it just makes it so that you, if you don't deny it or approve it within that sixty days, it's deemed approved.
Add that to your list.
Yeah.
So, obviously, there's somebody that's complained at some level.
So you can tell this has been, well, I don't know if this is Andrew Weems, W F I, he didn't ask on behalf of Opportunity Solutions Project. So I'm guessing that this is the real estate subdivision development guys that are chafing because Wichita, Paterson, you know, Oval Park, Bel Air, whatever, maybe even Liberty and Auburn take too long to approve things and run them through the system. This is their answer, is to force you guys to do it faster. So, I mean, I, I just, I mean, I didn't apply spec at, I read the-
What, so let's, let's take a look at that just briefly. Because, do they have the authority to force counties because of home run, home rule?
Yeah, that's, I mean-
I, I don't, I think there's a lawsuit ready to be filed on, on something like that, where they're saying, you, we are now taking over your zoning and planning and saying, you have to do this and this within a certain period of time.
Yeah, I, I knew that was, and that is a very complicated question, that kind of, I thought was beyond my range, for this purpose, just to warn you of the fact that it's out there. The first, seems to me, the first thing that when we hit fire alarm, then it's talking to you guys. You know, a lot of you legislators, whoever, when you go to this meeting or whatever, thought of that, and say-
Do you have a copy of that for each of us, or?
I, no, I, this is just one I-
Well, I, I just looked it up here, and also, there's, there's some other, the sixty days, not only the thing that I see. If an application is incomplete, local governments must inform the applicant within fifteen days detailing the reason for incompleteness. Should the local government fail to respond within specified time frames, the application will be automatically approved.
So therefore, they're taking all the responsibility off the applicant, putting all responsibility on the county.
Yes, exactly.
I have a real issue with that.
Yeah, well, that's, I mean, I knew this would probably be a, about an issue, and I, I get your point, which would be, you know, if it's passed, what do we do?
So I think for us-
Yeah, it's all hands on deck.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get ahold of, of our representatives, let them know how we feel about it.
I don't know if Mr. Weems is a representative or not, or should we?
If you, is that a complete bill?
Yeah.
If you don't mind having Christie just run a copy, I would, I would-
Yeah, I can cheat on the highlights if you want, that's why I was trying to go, what? Yeah, but I think that's, it's a legitimate question about what is your ability to, to, to home rule how, if it is passed. And I think because of the way this is set up, you get, counties don't have the same home rule by the citizens.
Well, here's a kicker here too.
They have constitutional home rule. You guys have statute.
Here, here's a kicker here too, they introduced it in house on the twenty-third. The twenty-seventh, it was withdrawn from the Committee on Local Government and referred to the Committee on Commerce, Labor, and Economic Development.
Right, shuffle it around, put it in something that nobody's ever heard of.
Yeah, they're sub, they're subverting you guys.
So, and, they had a hearing on it, January thirtieth, of course, it doesn't say anything about what the hearing detailed, because this is the first I've heard of this.
Wow, sure, it was just a bunch of alcohol issues.
What do you have?
For the, that's too quick, seven days, don't have the constitution. Like you answered the other, but I don't know.
All right, well.
I'm assuming the Kansas Association of Counties probably all agree.
I think so.
I don't know where I got this from, but I remember it was, well, it was a listener that boosted it, it was City Attorney's Association of Kansas. It was aligned with Kansas, the, the legalities.
Okay, so put your lawyer hat on, if, if you're a developer, you've come to Jackson County, and it's been more than sixty days, what, if you're representing the- Okay, so put your lawyer hat on, if, if you're a developer and you've come to Jackson County and it's been more than sixty days, what, if you're representing the developer, I mean, what, don't you already have some ability to say, hey, this process, we need an answer? I mean.
Well, I think the answer is probably no, other than probably some pretty extreme things. So if I'm, I'm representing a developer and we submit, you know, let's assume for the sake of argument, we're top notch and everything is right. And, and, you know, and let's also assume for the benefit of the doubt that, you know, the person, Kate, whoever it is, who's the minister, who's doing all the stuff, it's just, you know, the meetings and everything, calling when you do, you can't get an actual hearing on it or meeting on it, so.
Wouldn't the chain of, I mean, that chain be that if your developer isn't getting things done in time and fashion, he would come to us, that we would have the conversation with our administrator and say, why not?
Yeah, and, and that's probably one of those things where you end up saying, if it's day, day seventy, right? Of the process, and you know you have a hearing in another ten days, you know, my advice obviously would be, you know, just wait for the meeting, you're not, you know, the cost of whatever you're gonna do, because the next step in my mind is, is that you actually have to go to court and ask for the rate of mandates, which is pretty serious. And I think six months in to the process where it doesn't look like you got an end, that's probably where that triggers, right? Where, and especially, and this gives them probably a little bit more to say, well, it's been four months, sixty days is the limit. We should, you know, that's just mandated, it's required, and you're, you're that much better off in that fight. So, I mean, that, that's what I would say is that the remedy for them, for the six month guy, and no, you know, no sunset in sight, it's not great, it's still a very expensive process, but that's given them the benefit of the right. But it's pretty obvious, I mean, they, you know, reminds me of when I was working contract with the clients, you've ever, that, that's landed everywhere, big for my client. So I don't know why they, they didn't hold off, figuring that maybe there's some, you know, even twenty, thirty percent of the strike, they're still ahead of the game, make the ninety days.
Well, I'm going to send a email to Mike Taylor real quick and just ask him what, what kind of rumblings he's heard on HB twenty eighty eight.
I, I have something I'd like to add to the minutes from the thirty first. Um, said, Kurt said he was about cost of dumping of the landfill, he would like county entities to work better together to save the county money. We also had, you know, Scott said that basically he's, for the amount of tonnage that he's held in there, it's been at half price.
It's the amount of dumpsters that he has held in.
Amount of dumpsters, did, well, yeah.
Because.
That's the only way they have of measuring it because we don't have, Kurt's saying that those.
Dumpsters are full.
Yeah. Okay, we have no way of measuring that, and I don't know how you would ever do that. I just want to make noted that the county, I believe, we are trying to work with everybody, I mean, short of us just saying he can dump down there free, I mean. And that's certainly a conversation, you know.
What if, you know, right, I mean, I, during our weekend and stuff, and those, you know, those dumpster things aren't near as big, I'm sure, but, you know, just down there in the landfill.
The ones out of the lake?
Right.
The ones that are self dumping?
That Kurt takes down there.
They're not as big as what's.
No, not near.
As the dumpsters at the lake.
Right, right, so, so, I mean, when Kurt walked back in here, I mean, I understand what he's saying that he can't look at, he can't compare it that way.
Right, I think what they're looking at, the information that Scott gets is what, only what Ed gives that.
Right.
That he brought a dumpster and it holds X cubic yards.
Right.
And he looks at it down there and says, it's not completely full.
Right.
So we're giving you a discount right then and there.
You know, cause I don't know, in my own mind later I thought, so what if when he took his stuff down there and Ed went to, brought his ticket out for charging, you know, what if we made a policy that, that the lake dotted it, dumped it half price? That would be, you know, I don't know.
So who, so, so where the argument comes into play, even though it's all county money, every department head is going to say, but now he's pulling out of my budget.
Okay, but, so the other thing is, so, you know, he mentioned, he knew the sheriff's office went down there and dumped a load of something and they weren't charged at all.
Wasn't aware of that.
Well, that's what I was told. Maybe that was a different conversation, somebody told me that, well, they charged the sheriff's office and.
I don't know what the sheriff's office would.
I don't, I don't know, I didn't ask.
Their trash is picked up by a local service.
I didn't ask.
What it, what it ends up getting into is Scott's trying to defend, I mean, his budget, it would be like saying, okay, well, for every load that goes down here, we're gonna take a hundred dollars out of the treasures budget. Doesn't make sense, but, I mean, there's a cost to the county, so short of the commissioners coming up with that money out of a fund. It has to come out of somebody's budget, and what Scott's saying is, look, he's getting a discount, he has a budget for trash. Yes, there are times where.
But, but is he really getting a discount? Cause I don't think he probably is.
Based on the information that Ed's giving him. I don't know how you, short of putting in a set of scales down there and weighing everything, I don't know how you can get any closer than what they're doing now. I mean. I understand the whole work together and, and I appreciate the fact that, that Kurt, you know, can come in whenever, if we do stuff for Kurt out of the, the lake with road bridge equipment. I don't, I guess, I don't think we should be charging man hours or equipment hours and stuff like that, but at the end of the day, we have to figure out where, what budget does the money come out of? And are you gonna, are you gonna punish one department to help out another department? I mean, it'd be like you at, or the, the register of deeds saying, well, Christie's got a lot of money in her account, let's take this new software out of her account.
And I, I don't know, the lake and the landfill, they're all in county general, it's.
Wait, but they're all, they're all budgets?
I know they are, I know, I know. But I still think, I still think that the way he's being charged, it's not being looked at right, but that's.
So how do you change that?
I don't know how to change it, I don't.
Yeah, it's, it's like you said, I think the, the thing is, when Ed looks at a trailer or a dumpster or something like that, whatever comes in trucks, he's got a pretty good idea of what it is. I, and, and when you bring in a dumpster like Kurt's bringing in, I don't know, other than weighing it, how you can get a viable, you know. Something is looking at the dumpster itself, not looking at the, what's in the dumpster.
Right, but I think when you're. When he had the printouts and stuff, I don't think that's, I don't think that was compared right.
So maybe we just need to get him in here and, and, and let's have that conversation.
Yeah, maybe Ed needs to come in on the conversation.
And, and let's have that conversation.
Right.
Yeah, we can, we can do that next week.
That'd be good.
Uh, okay, so like I said, I am emailing Mike Taylor, and I just, I'm very short and simple. Uh, just curious if you've heard any rumblings about HB twenty eighty eight, this has to do with mandating counties to fast track some permits. In reading the summary of the bill, it seems this is putting all of the responsibility on the counties and giving the applicant a pass on responsibility, any insight would be appreciated. Good?
Yeah. Well, can you, can you add something there?
Sure.
Who's that guy?
Mike Taylor, he's, he's one of the lobbyist for Kansas Association of Counties.
I said, tell all your legislatures, they're gonna destroy their lives, you know, stop. Oh, oh, I, I was speaking out loud, right? Okay, well, I think you're clear about that, that's something I'm checking about that one. I'm worried about this thing, so I, I'm thinking about any threats made, direct or subtle or not so subtle, let's do it.
All right.
Keith, to answer your question, I did not translate that into the question. We had a rollover from what we needed.
So whatever was budgeted for the commissioners last year.
You guys were actually engaged.
Okay.
But I had a cash carryover higher than what I needed, so we could probably take some of that and put back.
That's fine.
Cause we should have had a cash carryover of, we needed two point three million, and I think I had a little two point eight million, so we had about four hundred and ninety thousand more to go.
Can we split that into the risk management and commissioner?
Just forget about it.
So do you want to do a whole amount or do you want to do four hundred thousand or not?
What, when you say forget about it, I mean, it just sits there.
It's gonna set once, but.
You don't need to know it's there to spend.
Right, but I think it's good to know where it's at, and is it, is it available for, uh?
It's in, it's in your cash, it's not in your budget.
Right.
So it's anywhere in cash, it's just not within the budget.
And how would, how would you know it's there unless you asked? I mean, that's, that, therein lies the problem. And to me, I see it as a problem because when it comes time to do budget, I think that's part of where we got in trouble over the last several years, of not knowing where everything is.
I actually have it on the board on the cash line, right, and I will then put what the cash carryover is.
I don't care, you can put it all in risk management, I mean, typically.
I don't care, you guys just tell me what you want me to do.
Yeah, uh, but.
Just like I said, I don't know what we're, what we're gonna do with that.
Well, I mean, if it just sits there, again, how do you know it's there when, when it comes time, time to do budget unless somebody says, oh?
But, but it will show up exactly.
How? Tell me how, sure.
It's the overall cash, right?
Yeah.
If the county has a.
Right.
Yeah, and, and you don't show, you have, doesn't need to fund, is that a problem?
Hey Kurt?
That's the problem, it's not doesn't need to fund, and so there's no way, when, when I'm doing, when I'm looking through that budget report.
It's leaking fast.
It, um, if it says there's nine million dollars, and of that nine million dollars, how would I know the four hundred thousand of it is, is a digital tax?
You're gonna have your cash amount, so you're gonna have your cash at the bottom, it's gonna show the cash total you have, and you're gonna have your budget amount. So the budget amount and your cash amount is gonna be a difference of what, like here, does that make sense?
It does, yeah, so you're subtracting doing it for.
And if, if you know where to look, it's there.
If you know where to look, if you know where to look.
But if you want me to move back here.
Just, just keep it in the vacuum line. You know, it's just like.
I want you to have that, because I'm.
If there's an emergency.
About the other documents, so.
But is that what risk?
We gotta keep this budget down.
Isn't that, isn't that what risk?
Yes, yeah, I didn't even go on the.
I mean, that's what gets there. So the.
Yes.
Because the average individual would not know.
You get your machine if they're.
Yeah, we, we'd have set the risk management up just for that purpose.
And that's, yeah, that makes sense.
But that's kind of what we'd had, had that budgeted in there for, right?
We don't need to make a decision to that.
Not budgeted it up as a one-time transfer into risk management.
Right, and then we'll spend on the risk management.
Yeah.
You have Mary's last name, so.
Is it S A B?
It's S A B.
C L N is S A B.
I know, hers is.
We can table that till next Monday.
Yeah.
If you give Mark choose.
I choose to table that till next Monday, let's talk about that on Monday, let's chew on that. So we read the minutes for the thirty first?
Yes.
Any additions or corrections?
Just what I told Christie.
And we have one on Mary's name.
Motion to approve, uh, with changes to January thirty one.
Thirty second, all right, it's been new consecutive to approve the minutes of January thirty first with changes, any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
On opposed, same sign, motion carries.
So, uh, on, on. So the way we had it didn't work with twenty five of us.
Todd and us.
So if I bolstered all?
Executive session for.
Then they have to go get.
Yeah, we're gonna have, we're gonna have Kasey over there.
Are you gonna have Christie register us?
I would like to do this, if you like to do the, you're gonna be this.
The women aren't they, we're not.
It's gonna cost fifty bucks, I think we do it up here.
Okay.
Yeah, that's great.
And I'll make that quick.
Yeah, I would like to, and we can just do it at home.
Well, I would just do it if you're like, oh, fifty bucks.
Or just, and it's essentially this thing.
She, but she has to register by the seven.
Want me to look next Tuesday for levels?
For eleven to twelve.
I can, I can just attach this into the packet that they signed, is this what you?
What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna make some admissions to that, I'm gonna email you right now, if you can send me the other, all these other documents that you have, I've heard.
Scott.
I can make, make it easier for me.
Said he talked Darlene, Darlene, three whole days, Darlene sold in last Tuesday, so we're good, we're good.
See anything else, let me know, I know about the keypad, not the key or something.
So Ed, we must say, Ed, we'll come along.
So anytime someone reads it, they get their own specific.
Oh, yeah, let's have, uh, let's have Christie get ahold of him and get him up here on Monday, and Kurt, and we'll see if he gets up, work down the trash deal, boy, Scott in here also. Uh, yes, if that's good with Kurt, cause Ed's down on Monday, was Ed's day off on Monday?
Monday, Tuesday, his day off, it's Monday.
Monday.
Yeah.
So we'll see if he can come in, I'll pay him forward, I mean, I don't, whatever.
Or can Scott just have a conversation with him and get, get some additional information from him?
Okay, that's fine.
I'd rather have Ed come in.
Okay.
I mean, I just would.
Well, and, and I didn't get to see, you know, everything that was right there on, on his paper.
Right, but we could, we could just all discuss it, would be better.
Right, and, and, and I don't know if I explained it well enough when I came back in, my thoughts, and maybe I'm, but the way, the way, the way when Scott was explaining it there, the way it's came to me is that I'm bringing a twenty yard trailer of trash every time, and I'm being charged for sixteen yards of trash.
Right.
And so because I'm not being charged for twenty yards of trash, I'm getting a discount. And that's the way, that's, that's the way it was explained, that, you know, the way I, I took that is I'm getting a discount because I'm not getting, getting charged for a full twenty yard trailer.
Right.
Because I can't get twenty yards in it.
Right. And, yeah, like we were talking earlier, on something that's reoccurring on a, on a monthly basis, it's, the money's, the money's gotta be paid for the dumpster, and the money's gotta come up out of the budget somewhere. So how do we find that balance where you're not getting overcharged, but also in landfill, they're not losing money out of their budget? Cause I, I explained it this way is, you know, it'd be like, um, it'd be like Road and Bridge asking for money out of somebody else's budget to cover something that's not in their budget.
Well.
And, and I get the whole working together thing, I think on the flip side of that, if Road and Bridge could come down with a blade and some dump trucks and help you, there should never be a charge, and we'll address that. Uh, because it's not a reoccurring thing, you're not asking for it on a monthly basis for them to come down and maintain your.
And I, and I make that true to, you know, Brandon or Scott or, you know, all of them, that this is when you have time and you're looking for something for your guys to do, I can always use a blade and I can always use a.
But we'll, we'll bring that, I, I, I would like to bring that up, but if you're doing an improvement, you need ten, ten loads all, let's just get it done, and there won't be any cross charge.
Yeah, pay the rock and that's it.
Right, you know, and that, and that's just, and that's all I, you know, was meaning when, you know.
Yep. But, no, and it's, and, and the, and the whole trash thing, I just, it didn't make sense to me, that's one of the reasons I. With, with the, uh, how he was explaining it, I guess, with.
Yeah, we'll get Ed down here and we'll, we'll walk through it.
Because the only thing I was looking at was, you know, what we're charging is thirteen dollars a yard, and that's, and that's what I'm paying for too, I mean. With thirteen is what's on my bill, is the actual price per yard.
Sure.
Is, is the same.
Is, is the same for what? Or the. But, no, it's still, in the long run, still saving money, just takes a lot more of my time.
Yep. Do you have anything this afternoon, are we good?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
No, I just, and then, once he gets that to me, uh, we can finalize that because we got a lot of people. Well, we have a lot of people, we need to be covered on whatever.
Yep.
Whatever he thinks and, and then we.
Still need an executive session?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Uh, I'd like an executive session with a.
With, with, did this bolster?
Nope.
Oh, okay.
You were right, you were right.
Now, now you leave. With, uh, commissioners Christie and Tyler.
Moving, going to executive session for purpose of.
What time on it?
Purpose of litigation. Possible relitigation. To include our counsel for here in the chambers, beginning at 11:38.
It's just 11:38 right now.
11:39, I watched it click over.
Yeah.
Can second it?
It's been properly moved and seconded, going to executive session, uh, with the members listed above, uh, for certain client privilege for possible litigation. Any more further discussion?
How long was it?
Uh, five minutes, let's go 10 minutes, I don't want to make you, let's go 10 minutes. Any further discussion?
Oh.
Not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carried. All right.